Thank you. So, okay, so it's Chris, right? All right, very good. I wanna welcome everyone for the Wareham zoning board appeals for tonight, Wednesday, March nine, two thousand twenty-two. It is six thirty-two P M. And apparently we're on Zoom. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I would make a roll call. We have Veronica, the Lebanese, regular member. Just say yes, or here. Our clerk, Jim Akabachi.
I'm here and Veronica's searching for her moot moot button, but she's here.
Alternate member, Mr. Troy Larson.
I'm here.
Veronica?
Yeah.
Rich Sample?
Yeah.
I got a member and myself, the chair, Nazal Blassey. I'm here. Okay, we're gonna do some preliminary business. We have the meetings for August eleventh and August twenty-five.
August twenty-five is real easy. There were only three members present. We continued everybody.
Right.
The the other one, I I went through it quickly. I didn't read it as much as I'd like to, but it appears to be fine.
Veronica, what do you think?
I I actually didn't have time to review the minutes, so whatever the board decides is fine with me.
I reviewed them. I think there was only a one, one finding at the end. There was a vote four, one, zero, and it says Veronica, second, I think it was that she denied.
Correct.
That needs to be edited.
Other than, other than that, everything else looked good.
And Sonia's online. Sonia, did you hear that?
She. I did. I will go ahead and revise that.
Then we'll sign it as revised. I make a motion to sign as presented or revised.
My second.
Okay, Troy, you had a chance to look at him?
Yes.
You good with him?
I'm good with him.
Right, I believe Veronica, that was the one. She denied the variance on one oh eight High Street. That was the one. Okay, uh, all right, very good.
Did I abstain on that one?
You, no, you didn't abstain. You voted against the barrier.
Oh, okay.
Didn't you abstain? No, you vote that you vote for the special permit, yes, but the variance, I believe you said no. I was away. I don't remember, or I wasn't. I forgot.
Okay, I may just.
You can check it out and do it with.
Okay, very well. Good, that being said, so can we get a motion?
We got a motion and a second now. She's already got a first and a second.
Okay, we have a second by Rich. All in favor, say aye Veronica.
Aye.
For the minutes, Richard?
Yeah.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And for the record, Troy was set for the rest of night for Mr. Jake's Marison seat. Troy?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, let's, we don't have continue a public hearing. Let's move for the public hearing six dash twenty-two Lara Smith Flori, special permit slash variance twenty-seven Standish Ave. Aaron, wanna read it?
Yep. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on March ninth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M. Via Zoom to consider petition number six dash twenty-two for a special permit in the principal use regulation requirements of Article Three, Section three twenty, and a use variance from the requirements of Article fourteen, Section fourteen sixty under the Wareham zoning bylaws to Lara Smith Flori of twenty-seven Standish Ave, Wareham, Mass. O two five three eight, seeking to operate a home office located at twenty-seven Standish Ave, Wareham, Mass. O two five three eight. Assessors map one twenty-one, lot fifteen seventy-six in the R one thirty zoning district.
But is Lara in? Lara Flori?
Hi, yes, I'm here. Thank you.
Okay, wanna explain to us your address and all the stuff, what your house consists of, and what are you here for?
I guess a private four-bedroom dwelling, and I am wanting to file a D B A with Town Hall to do consulting work. It'll, it's all remote. I would have no clients coming to the house. It's all a computer-based work.
Okay, will you be putting any signage?
No, no signage.
Okay. We had things before like this. I'll start with the board. Rich, what do you think?
Don't really have any problems with it. I was just curious. She said that there wouldn't be any extra traffic added to the front, but I was just curious. I just saw when I went by the the location, seemed like there was a lot of cars in the yard. I just was wondering if it was gonna add up, but she said that in her statement that she wasn't gonna increase it, so.
No, we have two adult children that each have their own car, so that's why we have so many cars in the driveway. But no, definitely, I I will not have clients coming.
Well, how big is your land, Lara?
Um, I know, I don't even know. It's, no, it's less than an acre, but I'm not even sure.
Okay.
I think it's basically one of your standard Shangri-La sized lots.
Yeah.
Okay, Jimmy, what do you think?
I've got no problem.
Troy?
I have no issues with it.
Okay, Veronica?
Uh, so there'll be no clients coming, and I'm assuming all remote, you probably won't have any employees, at least not at your location.
That's right. No employees at all. It's a sole proprietorship, so.
Okay. I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Uh, I I don't have any questions. Anyone on the public, Troy, you good with that, you said?
Um, yeah, I'm good with it.
All right, anyone in the public against this project, in favor of this project first? I hear no. Anyone against this project? I also hear none. So that being said, let's move to close. Can we move to close?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion to close the hearing, public hearing six dash twenty-two for Lara Smith Flori. Have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Veronica. All in favor, say aye Veronica?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Uh, Richard?
Aye.
And Troy?
Aye.
Myself, aye. It's closed. What's the wishes?
Uh, just for everybody's certification, I looked up map one twenty-one lot fifteen seventy-six, ten seventy-six. It's, um, hang on a minute, Keith. It's, it's two small lots, comes together. She's got about six thousand square feet there. Typical of up that area. I make a motion to approve as requested.
All right, any, any, any discussion or conditions on the, on the variance?
I'd like to, um, put a condition that, um, yeah, okay. There are no additional employees that are employed at that location. And should, should, should the business change at some point in the future?
I would, I would like to make a condition, Sonia, if you could please type it, that, that's only a paperwork license. I mean, of course, you could operate, but no traffic consulting is pretty much because she's gotta be on the phone or the computer. If I'm, am I correct, correct, Lara?
Yes, that's correct.
So no traffic, no, uh, not, no office to be built. I mean, she, apparently she's gonna use our dining room, or she has it done, but no office to be built. No, no parking for customers, no signage. That make sense?
That's correct.
All right, Sonia, if you could type this, please, to the records. So that's the motion by Jim, seconded by Veronica, amended by myself, Nazee. All in favor, say aye Veronica?
Aye.
Uh, and Richard?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Troy?
Aye.
And myself, aye, Kelly. So you got it, man. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. All right. Second public hearing, seven dash twenty-two RJ Moto Inc., site plan review slash variance, eight and ten. That's not the one, Chashman Road, right? Right, Aaron? There's another one.
It's, no, it's a twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road. The one on post on the website should be the one. I had to amend it. Let me just make sure it's the one.
All right.
Yeah. Yeah, originally I I wrote the wrong one, but then I amended it beforehand to make sure that it was the right one. But I'll read the, I'll read it into the record right now.
Uh, just, just one second. Just give me a minute.
Okay.
So. Okay, you can just read the the hearing number like seven dash what, then the name and all that, because I I don't have it on my email.
Okay, it's a, it's seven dash twenty-two RJ Moto Inc., site plan review slash.
You're doing the same thing. That's the one I.
No, it is. Yeah, it is.
It's the same applicant?
No, it's, it is RJ Moto. The, the address that I originally put, the one, the Charge One Road, the address is twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road, but it's, it's the same applicant.
I get you.
Yeah.
All right, very good. So that's seven twenty-two RJ Moto Inc., twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road, right?
Yep, that's it.
Okay, very well. You wanna read that into the record?
Yep. So the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on March ninth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M via Zoom to consider petition number seven dash twenty-two for a special permit from the principal use requirements of Article three, Article three twenty, the principal residential building law, building per lot requirements of Article six, Section six thirteen, and site plan review from the site plan review requirements of Article fifteen, Section fifteen twenty under the Wareham zoning bylaws to RJ Moto Inc., appeal box one fifty Buzzards Bay, Mass. O two five three two, seeking to construct two new residential duplex-style dwellings, the rear of an existing duplex structure at the front of the property located at twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road, Wareham, Mass. O two five three eight, map one twenty-nine lot eleven oh one slash C one in the C S zoning district.
Okay, very well. Who's here for RJ Moto? Russell Moto?
Russell Moto here.
Okay, you wanna tell us what are you doing, and your name for the records, and what are you doing?
Name for the record, Russell Moto. I'm here with Brad Bertolo. He's gonna take it from here, pretty much. He's the engineer on the project. After vast research and working with Brad, I've decided to construct two duplexes in the back of an existing duplex. And currently I have those two duplex, the duplex that's there rented, and I'd like to construct two more in the back. And one thing I'd like to mention is that it's it's not on for a variance. Um, in the research that we've done, it's on for a site plan review and a special permit. So it's not a variance. I just wanted to clarify that. And Brad, are you here?
The board says.
I am here, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Brad, take it from here, but I'm here for any questions or any.
Okay, very well. Brad, name and address?
My name is Brad Bertolo with J C Engineering on behalf of RJ Moto Inc. As he mentioned, we are looking to construct two new duplex structures at the property of twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road. I may share my screen. I'll post a, post a plan. Uh, twenty-one Old Glen Charlie Road is near the, the rear, at the end of the road. Is just one additional house lot at the back prior to the cul-de-sac. Uh, the existing, uh, lot is approximately eighty thousand square feet, currently contains a duplex dwelling along with a driveway and kind of a back gravel slash storage. It's kind of a parking area or regard of the property. Uh, it's kind of gravelly and sandy. This property is located in the strip commercial zoning district. So according to the building commissioner's letter, construction of up to five-plus dwellings or more than a single-family dwelling requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals. Uh, doing so, a lot needs to meet certain requirements. It needs to have, uh, at least two hundred fifty feet of frontage and at least twenty thousand square feet. Zoning setbacks are thirty feet from the front, twenty from the side, and rare. Again, this is the existing conditions plan. Old Glen Charlie Road is a paved, uh, public roadway with a turnaround at the end due to the construction of Route twenty-five. Uh, the current house is serviced by, or current duplex is serviced by a gravel driveway. That kind of stops at the, at the top of the hill here for one unit, couple parking spaces here. And the other unit uses a driveway that forks off of the main driveway, and they park in the front and the side on this location here. Current house is serviced by town water. Uh, it's got a gas, gas line that feeds both dwellings, natural gas and overhead wires that comes off of the overhead poles, uh, within Old Glen Charlie Road. Uh, this house is also serviced by septic systems as town sewer is not available within Old Glen Charlie Road. The area that I'm kind of highlighting here is, is, uh, already cleared. Uh, it's the gravel area that's out behind the part, uh, the duplex. The remaining area is wooded, kind of slopes down to a small isolated wetland at the bottom of the hill adjacent, adjacent to Glen Charlie Road in this area. So as part of this project, we would like to construct two more duplex structures shown in purple here, pink, pink lines. Uh, what we're proposing is a twenty-six by twenty-six attached, uh, structure to, to structures. Offset a couple feet for visual appearance, uh, have more roof lines as opposed to one square or rectangular box. Both these, uh, duplex structures are proposed to be serviced by a new paved driveway that comes off of, uh, Old Glen Charlie Road. There'll be a small, uh, paved apron for the existing driveway utilized for this unit. Uh, the driver will continue up the hill and turn and feed for small parking areas. Suitable for two parking spaces each, uh, for each unit. And we'll have a small parking area, parking area for this existing duplex. Currently, they park uh, adjacent to the structure right here. So just a minor change in the orientation of their proposed parking. Uh, we are proposing underground septic systems, uh, for this, this structure. Uh, both structures, each will contain a septic tank and uh, subsurface leaching facility. In accordance with the board health requirements, each septic system that's, uh, proposed will include alternative treatment and nitrogen reduction to meet the, uh, water quality bylaw of the health department. Uh, the septic's shown in this, uh, blue area, either side of, of the side of the structure, and this is out in front of the structure. Again, the grading mimics what's, what's there today. Currently, the driveway, existing driveway drives up to a high point on the property. That's, it's roughly in this location here. Uh, finished grades on the site, uh, on the driveway would be about the same. Uh, the grade in front of the house is about a foot higher. In relationship to the budding lot, uh, the grades as is today, and when, when completed, will be about three or four feet lower than the grade along this property line that has a stockade fence at the moment. So visually, uh, set lower than, uh, this adjacent property, uh, help with, uh, minimal impacts to the neighbors. Feel the, I forgot to mention that this property as proposed, this project is proposing twelve parking spaces. Because it's ten or more parking spaces as a combined count in all the uses, this project also requires site plan review. So site plan review and special permit. Um, the, the utilities will include a new water line that will run up the shoulder of the proposed driveway, and that'll feed the four new structures shown in blue. We're also proposing to rework the existing gas line and provide a natural gas to all, uh, six units. Uh, we're also proposing a utility pole in this location. Currently, the, the power runs across the street overhead to the structure. So we're proposing to intercept it with a, a new utility pole in this location. Uh, obviously, the power will be run from this pole across the street, tie into this pole, and then from here will feed the same, same existing structure as it is today and feed a, a pole at the top of the hill to feed these four new, four new duplex, or four new units. Uh, from this utility pole, it'll all be underground to each, each structure. So the only overhead, uh, proposed is the electric leading up to the top of this hill here. Again, as I said, the site is mostly stripped of vegetation. Uh, we are proposing some clearing in this area for some grading around the side of the house. And a small little retainer wall, approximately three feet high, uh, to kind of have a little level backyard off the back of the structure. Again, all, all four structures will be serviced by a paved driveway. And they will include a deck on each structure. Due to zoning, we're gonna have proposed decks on the sides for this unit. And for this unit, we're proposing decks on the back. These structures due to the grading will have full walkout and the structure will have a partial walkout. We did, as part of the project, submit a detail showing fire apparatus access to the top of the structure. We, uh, top of the, the hill, we did, uh, receive a letter from the fire department stating that due to the length of the driveway, current regulations require a turnaround to be provided. So that's something that we'll have to look at uh, and modify the alignment of the driveway to provide adequate access for a turnaround for fire apparatus. In regards to the structure itself.
Excuse me, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure, go ahead, Rich.
I, I thought there was more concerns with the fire department than just the turnaround. I thought there was underground tanks.
I'll, I'll get it. I'll get into that as well.
We'll get into that. Let him finish his presentation, and we'll get into that.
Again, these are, uh, two-story, three-bedroom units, each, uh, twenty-six by twenty-six. They'll be, uh, constructed side by side, and as I stated, they'll have a, uh, for visual appearance, uh, will have a two-foot offset to provide some, uh, trim lines and, and roof lines to make it more visually appealing, uh, at the top of the hill there. Again, this is a kind of a concept plan of the layout. Uh, this is for at least, uh, the first set at the top of the hill where they have a full walkout, a deck off the back. And, uh, the other unit is gonna be very similar. The decks would actually be off the side. And, uh, they'll have a partial walkout, so the grade will be a little higher along the backyard. Uh, but still in the front, look exactly, exactly like this. In regard to the comments, the other comment regarding the fire department, everything that were proposed uh, on the project, utility-wise and underground, is, is rated for H twenty loading. So it's a same, same reloading as your typical catch basins and sewer manholes, uh, suitable for, uh, vehicular traffic. Again, this, uh, project is requires a special permit. Uh, we feel that the proposed use is not detrimental to the neighborhood. We have a mix of single-family dwellings, uh, duplex existing on this lot. Uh, there's a partial mixed-use, uh, structure, uh, right down the street that recently just got, uh, approval from this boards to add a house adjacent to an existing garage structure. Uh, the first two, uh, houses on the property are on the, uh, roadway are duplex and a three-family. So the proposed use is in harmony with the neighborhood. We obviously are very close to Cranberry Highway. Eat, you need to wear ham, uh, with all the shops and restaurants in the area. So we feel that, uh, the additional of, addition of four additional residential structures would, would, uh, help with the, uh, businesses in the neighborhood. As I mentioned, the structure is gonna be, uh, connected to town water. We'll have private septic systems. Uh, we have a new paved driveway that, that leads up to the top that suitable for fire, uh, apparatus. And, uh, one, one big benefit to this project is we are proposing uh, some subsurface infiltration in this location. Currently, uh, it's kind of a gravel driveway that, that drains down during larger rainstorms, get some, uh, sediment runoff, and obviously overland surface water runoff that drains down into the street and is captured by this, uh, catch basin. So we're proposing to put a catch basin on this, on the side of this road. It'll be super elevated roadway, so high on one side, low on the other. So the water drains from one side to the other as it drains down the hill, and that'll capture, uh, surface water runoff from, uh, the, the front of these structures, where all the, the roofs pitch towards the front. The grade in the front of the house pitches towards the driveway, and then the driveway pitches down towards the, uh, catch basin. And then that water will be infiltrated, uh, in the ground and treated so that, infiltrated so that it's less stormwater runoff under current conditions, even with, uh, the addition of this additional impervious area of the driveway and dwellings. That basically wraps up, uh, the proposed projects. Uh, we do have a conservation next week, and we're aware of the, the changes regarding the uh, turnaround that the fire department has requested. But if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them or, uh, make note to try to answer at a following here, here.
All right, I'm gonna start by Veronica. Okay, what do you think, Veronica?
Um, I'm I, I think obviously I would wanna have Charlie take a look at the plans. There's a lot going on with the septic and the water line and getting everything in there. Um, other than that, I don't really have any comments at this time.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Um, I'm in favor. My name is.
I'll get to you. Just give me a minute.
Thank you.
No problem. Uh, Jimmy? What do you think?
I got a couple of questions. The, um, Brad mentioned that everything is everything's in the ground, th- that the fire apparatus could drive over it of all the new stuff. What about the, the pre-existing from the existing two family? And, uh, that's a leach field I see there with two septic tanks. Is that stuff able to be driven on as well?
Uh, the, the leaching, the leaching field, we feel can be driven on. We're trying to avoid, uh, crossing over that because it is a, a pipe and stone leaching facility. Uh, it's not concrete structures, and I just don't want to impact those existing septic systems.
And, and again.
There's no, there's no, wow, a- as currently proposed, not proposing any paved surface over the, the footprint of the existing septic system.
Well, um, again, through the chair to Brad, um, I'm looking at the fire department, asking for the ability to turn around and thinking that might be where they go. And then my related question is, um, I noticed that everything that's in chambers that's going new, it looks like it's going in chambers, and they all have reserves. Where's the reserve for the existing two families? Is that gonna be elsewhere on the property?
Uh, we're not proposing any change to that. I believe the reserve at the time that those were permitted are, is in between the, the trenches. They, they separate the, uh, leaching trenches. in this this area. So two of them feed for for one unit and two of them feed for the other unit. So they they sit, the reserves are right beside it, in between the space between the trenches. And if there's if there's issues with this, I've already talked with the applicant. And future future changes to the septic system shouldn't when it 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 does become failed. We have plenty of room on the side of the property to reroute a new leaching facility.
Very good.
That's all I see for now. I like to, yeah.
I want to put my two cents in. Brad, how did you calculate the according to strip commercial, you need, how do you calculate the number to come up with six units?
Strip, there's no per unit requirement in the strip commercial. It just states twenty thousand square feet. And I went over this with the building commissioner. So that's the reason why he had agreed with this project being a special permit and not needing any type of variance. He agrees with the unit count on the as a whole.
Okay, but I I read the bylaw. And the bylaw says you need thirty thousand for the first hundred fifty feet, two hundred square fifty frontage and forty five thousand. Then it says also residential twenty. I believe the intention of the bylaw was, I totally understand. Let me finish this. And it says twenty thousand. It's missing a star asterix two, which is means for each additional. I do understand how the building inspector wrote this because that's what's before him and the bylaw is vague. But I believe the intention of the bylaw is typographical error. It should be an additional twenty thousand for each unit. So now, in other word, it kind of contradicts itself. So if you have twenty thousand square feet, you could put unlimited apartments or complexes or duplexes. But if you want to put two, you need forty five thousand. If you're gonna, if you want to look at the book, the by law book. And I believe it's on the, it's on plans to share to fix it in the next town meeting. But that's, that's my belief. And I think the intention is each additional should be twenty thousand. But I'll pass it to the board, see what they think. Richard, what do you think?
Well, seeing that we're coming out of a a winter season, we have a witness, some of the piling of snow. I have some concerns with the picture, the the grade of the property heading towards the property that's on the left hand side. When they get ready to stop plowing, where they're going to put all the snow, the snow could go on that bank. It lead it heads down towards that other house. Is it going to create runoff in that area that could be detrimental to the neighbor? And that's my concern as far as I know, he said he was going to control it to going down the driveway. But you're not going to control it going into the neighbor's yard.
So that's my apparently, if we're gonna go forward with this. And if the board is, if the board is in agreement with the commissioner says about the twenty thousand, that's gonna have to go to plan review with Mr. Lowly, different firm, it's gotta be part of fifty three G account and goes for reviews. And that stuff definitely will be addressed in the reviews.
I have a question.
Yeah, one second, Veronica. Does that make sense, Rich?
I had the concern and you've given me an answer to move onward. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me go quick to Troy. I come back to you, Veronica. Troy, what do you think?
Well, the question I have is, I know it was stated that there'd be a pull move to the end of the driveway and then one at the top. And then the underground going to each unit after that. What's the reason it can't be underground all the way up? It's already dug up for the other stuff.
I don't think, I don't think there's no reason. It's up to developer. That's not a Form C or a Form A subdivisions. It's up to the developer. It definitely would make better sense and better for developer to go underground. But we could pass this question to Brad. He's taken notes after we get to Veronica. She wants to mention something. Okay. If it was a Form C or A or not A, just Form C, for me, you can't really impose underground. But Form Cs, you can. Veronica, what are you saying?
This is, so this this project is for multiple, multiple family dwellings. Basically, it's more than one multiple family dwelling. So my question would be about, what about the five acre minimum? I'm I'm confused as to why that wasn't. When you have more than one in a commercial or MR thirty, you have to have, I thought, five acres. But what's the square footage of this lot? Is it five acres?
It's eight thousand. You don't need five acres if you want to cluster them. If you want to do a cluster development, you'll go for five, you need five acre minimum. But something like this, you don't need a five acres. If it meets the criteria of the frontage and the square footage, that that's what I talked about. But the bylaw is very vague and it was some typographical error. So that the commissioner wrote exactly what the bylaw reflects. I disagree with it, but that's his letter.
If I may.
Yes, Jim.
I'm 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 not sure I'm getting it. The twenty thousand for the other for the other use. Is it, it's twenty thousand per additional unit? Is that what the rule is or is that the interpretation? Or is the interpretation, once you get to a one, a two family and a I I'm not quite following how this is calculated.
Well, it's very, it's, I am hundred percent sure, or I should say ninety nine point nine percent. This typographical error, they forget to start two or star one. And then the bottom of the page, it should say each additional additional unit. Just like we saw things that, let's say for on the village, each first two units, you need fifteen thousand, each additional two thousand. And MR thirty, same thing. If you look the previous page on the bylaw, it says first two units forty five, each additional thirty thousand. So apparently, in strip commercial, each additional twenty. But the book does not reflect that asterix two or asterix one was the description. So the way it reads right now, like I said before, if you want to build two units, you need forty five thousand square feet. If you want to build six units, you need twenty thousand square feet, the way it reads right now.
Need less land to build more units?
If if you read it the way it is right now, that's how it looks.
Then we could have twenty in there based on
if you could yes. Oh, yeah, absolutely. If he, if you could, according to the bylaw, the way it's written, if he could fit twenty units and put parking lots and drainage and meet coverage, he can. That's why I I'm saying it's a typographical error.
It's gotta be. I mean, it doesn't look like a bad project, but it does look, it it seems to me that we just denied an application right in this, within a hundred or two hundred, a few hundred feet of here for a lot less.
For who?
Pardon me?
The one in Tyler Ave or JC Engineering?
Didn't JC have something right beside his office that that didn't didn't fly? Yep. But he was only looking for a hell of a, I I'm just, I'm missing something here.
He was looking
I don't think that was the same, Jim. Yeah, I don't think it was the same. I think it was about the use, I think.
It was exactly the same. He didn't have forty five thousand square feet. He needed balance to put a duplex. He had the frontage, not the footage.
Oh, he didn't have forty five. Okay.
But according to the bylaw, right now, if twenty thousand plays, he could put ten units.
He's he's got twenty thousand, he could, we we could pass it on the on the other other use. So that's what I'm, that's what I'm I think we need to continue this and get some clarification.
All right, before we go forward, let's go to the neighbors. Is there anyone in the public want us not against in favor of this project? In favor? I hear none. Anyone in the public want to speak against?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. The first gentleman, Better Way Primary Care, whoever.
That's me.
You name an address, sir. You name an address.
It's my name is Russ Crean. And it's twenty four Old Glen Charlie. I live directly across the street from his drive, from Russ's driveway.
Okay. And and what's your, what's your comment? What's, why you against this project?
So our concern is that the Old Glen Charlie Road is a small old road. And I can appreciate the engineer's due diligence. But as you spoke of the rain runoff, just last year, we had a storm late summer, early fall. And the runoff that came down that dirt driveway wiped out five thousand dollars worth of landscaping I had just put in. The drainage in the road is inadequate. The two drains tied together and they actually drain out into the river under my dock. So the drainage wise, there's nothing that's going to help the street. And what another thing about the strips, you know, land in the back, Russ has been bringing in dump trucks full of stumps for the last two years. Like to fill in that hole in the back. How can you possibly build something now on something that's just been filled in with stumps in the last year or two? So there are duplexes on the road. They're at the very end of the road. There are old houses that are, you know, tied into public sewer. And they have, you know, apartments. This end of the road is, you know, just single family homes. I have three other neighbors that are all listening. And it's just putting these these duplexes in the backyard. I I'm a contractor. I don't see how you're going to come up with a driveway that's going to do all this turnaround stuff. It's it's just, it's detrimental to the street.
Can I speak separate from my husband?
One second, ma'am. So just to answer you, on on the matter of the construction, it's it's up to the engineer to, he's engineer, the Mr. Russell's engineer, which is JC Engineering to certify. Let me finish, to certify the soil he's put in his house and and the road and the drainage. I could assure you, when it goes to studies by a town consultant, all these issues will be addressed if this is your problem.
Well, we just had rain and snow and the drain on Russell's side of the of the roads stayed, the road stayed flooded for three days.
You mean Glen Char, Old Glen Charlie?
Old Glen Charlie. And I have one on my side. And so my now my flooded. And then the runoff comes up over my front yard and runs down the side of my yard. And you just watch all of the dirt and everything go right out into the river.
Okay, but all Glen Charlie roads, all due respect, this is not the applicant's problem. It's we, it's not his problem. That's the town's problem.
Well, it is, but that's doing construction and the number of trucks would be coming in here and trying to make it up this hill. And then the all of it's going on, how are you going to build houses in a hole that's just been filled in with stumps?
Like I said, this is up to his engineer to certify the soil. Apparently, if he built, if he fills on on soil, I mean, on stumps, apparently, it's gonna fail. He definitely cannot divert any drainage to the road. He gotta take in all his drainage. And like I said, this will continue with the consulting and we'll filter these matters out. Next person, ma'am, I heard your voice.
That's my wife. Yeah, Shannon.
Additionally, there's a Belinda
Just your name for the ma'am, just your name for the record.
My name is Shannon. There is also another neighbor. Her name is Belinda Janudo. She's out in the waiting room, waiting for the host to let her in. She's a neighbor that would like to speak on this matter, but nobody has let her into the meeting. So if somebody could address Belinda in the waiting room so that she could speak on this topic as well, because there are several of our neighbors that want to be heard on this. I just wanted to make that known. But I myself wanted to point out to the fact that from the river's edge to the corner of Mr. Mato's property line is a hundred and twenty feet, a hundred and twenty feet. That being said, the only houses on this road that are multiple family houses are the first two at the very beginning of the road. Mr. Mato's own home was a single family home until recently, when he converted it before moving out of it. The rest of the houses are all single family homes. We are all, we all have children. There are more than twenty children that live on the increase in traffic flow that goes up to Mr. Mato's homes. If he should put these extra six family units up there, might be catastrophic because we have children that are playing in the the yards. We have children that are riding bicycles up and down the streets. It is already a very, very small, not well taken care of road. The additional burden of the construction and the trucks going in and out on the road that's already being neglected by the town might be
Want to stop, can you stop for a minute? Is that Miss Carrie, can you wait one minute? Aaron, is that? Is that my computer? Everybody's here in her world?
No, I think it's just you.
You guys here in her well?
I can hear her.
It's my computer?
Yeah, I think so.
All right. Okay, very well. Sorry, ma'am. Just continue.
So several of us neighbors have got together and talked about this. And we just feel that this is not the right type of development for this neighborhood. We're a very small community. We're very close knit. We're very family oriented. And I just think bringing in an extra six family development. But there's the two family now that Mr. Mato just put there. So bringing in extra six family development into a very small town feel neighborhood is just not the right environment. Because this is not a road that's full of multi-family homes. That's not what this is about. Our next door neighbor is an eighty five year old woman that lives alone. And so it it just, it's not the right fit for our neighborhood. And especially being that we are waterfront and we are waterfront that directly leads to Buzzards Bay. I am very concerned about the contamination that goes out into our waterways.
Well, regarding the conservation, I mean, the waterways, all these things, I'm sure conservation will address this issue. Now, is your friend, is that her number seven, seven, four, six, three, four, five, three, three, six?
No, that's Nation, that's Nation Giuliano, eighteen Old Glen Charlie.
Okay. What, just one minute. If your friends want to speak, can she, can you guys, if you guys could they could email, go on our website and look at the at the link.
He wasn't able to do that. He was only able to call in.
Nate's talking.
So Nate wants to call in, he's talking. Could could we get back to the main screen and get rid of them out?
Can we get rid of the the blueprint so we can see who we're talking with? Is that possible?
Yeah, the blueprint is on, so.
Okay, sorry about that.
Who's speaking now?
That's me. I'm up here.
Okay, who's Nate wants to speak?
Nate's on the phone.
Okay, Nate, you want to speak?
Sure, I'd like to add to the to the discussion.
I need your name and address for the record. Name and address.
Sure, it's Nathan Giuliano, eighteen Old Glen Charlie Road. And in regards to all of it, unfortunately, it is what it is. It's commercially zoned and we as neighbors can say what we want to say about what we'd like to see happen. And you guys are going to hash it all out by the rules. I I would like to see clarification on that twenty thousand square foot number you're talking about. I don't think that it has a frontage. I don't think that it's, as Shannon was just saying, a fit for the neighborhood to ram all these additional houses in there. It's, it's the bottom line of all of this, it comes down to taking a long look in the mirror. As a human being, as your neighbors, as somebody that grew up in the town and say, I have this lot here. Just because you can do something doesn't mean you have to do it. Yeah, can you, can you shove six houses in there? Sure. But why, why can't you just build a single family home and make it nice? And you talk about making it nice and respectable for the neighbors. Well, what would be nice and respectable is if Russ Mato's lot was still a single family home with a big, beautiful backyard. That's what I would like to see. But unfortunately, the rules are the rules. And I, as a neighbor, can sit here and say, I don't want six more houses shoved in there. I'd like to see a single family home there with a single family in it. But I probably can't say much about it. I don't even know Russ very well. I know the name. I've seen his truck go by. But, uh, I probably can't say much about it. I don't even know Russ very well. I know the name, I've seen his truck go by. But, um, I don't know if it even matters, but if you get all these people in here, is he gonna be a landlord? Has his previous landlording skills been up to par? Is your quality of, of a landlord have any bearing on whether or not you should continue to build more houses? I doubt it. Unfortunately, that's not something that can deny somebody a permit to build a house. Correct me if I'm wrong. I personally would like to have people take a long look in the mirror and think about what they do. Because you're making a lot of money off of shoving a lot of houses in there. You don't live in the neighborhood anymore. But all of us have to live here and deal with the consequences of all the additional stuff that goes along with it. And, uh, it comes down to taking a look in the mirror and, uh, seeing what kind of a person are you? Is the money more important than crapping on with your neighbors?
Sir, 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 let's, let's.
So that's, that's all I have to say. Every, everybody, every wants to, everybody wants to talk about hours about uh, runoffs of water and whether or not you have enough room for a fire truck. I honestly don't even care about any of that stuff. That's all gonna be addressed by conservation, like you said, that's already, it's either.
Right, but please, please on this board, we cannot, this is not about a character of the person, it's about the property, so.
I know.
If somebody wants to point fingers at, at other person, I'm gonna have to shut him off. Mrs. Cheryl, Cheryl?
Jenna. Oh, Cheryl, sorry.
Cheryl?
Hi, I'm, I'm Cheryl Schubert. I live twenty-three Old Glen Charlie Road. Right about to my house. So these homes that he is proposing to build would be right in my backyard. The driveway that he is gonna put in would be right against my fence. Creating lots of noise commotion into my yard now. With also having houses that he said with decks. Now they're sitting right into my yard. There goes my privacy completely. When I bought this home, I was under the, uh, so, um, I was told that the behind here was wetlands and it was not allowed to be built on. So my concern, I'm, you know, my questions about the conservation of the wetlands and, you know, where the wetlands have gone now since I've moved here. I don't know how it would have gone away. Or how it's now able to be built on. Um, I'm just, you know.
I'll answer you this question. These question, you will be notified with conservation. And your answer will be, well, your questions will be answered. What, I would like, I would like to hear from the board right now. I personally am not willing to go forward with this. I am, I have an intention to overturn the building inspector letter, uh, decision. Uh, this is the, uh, if, if the, of course, the board has to agree with me that this is a variance, it's not a special permit. I have, I don't have anything against the project or Mr. Mato. Uh, I mean, apparently he could fit it, but that's a different story. And I'm sure town consultant would hash out the, hash out the drainage, all this. But I believe the bylaw intention is very clear. It's a typographical error. And the only thing we could do if we wanna deny, we can, or, or, uh, this is my opinion, please. I'm not speaking on nobody's opinion. I would like to overturn the building inspection, inspect the commission of decision and have the applicant apply it as a variance because it's definitely not a special permit. But that's, that's my opinion. Uh, Mr. Dan, Dan, you wanna speak?
Yeah, uh, Dan is real, the seventeen Old Glen Charlie, just, uh, just on the other side, the south side of this property. Um, yeah, I, I do wanna say, I don't, I, I, I've met Russ a couple of times and he seems like a nice guy, so, you know, um, just to, just to say that since he, he got a little shade there. Um, I saw the plans for this and, uh, you know, when we got the thing in the email and I was pretty shocked. Um, I, I, I'm not supportive of this. It's, um, it's, it's a big change. I agree with what everybody said. It's, it's, uh, it's a small apartment complex and, you know, for us personally, it, uh, it would impact our home value, you know, if, if that was here before we bought this house, we wouldn't have bought it. Um, and, uh, you know, so, so, sorry, Russ, if we had talked about it, I would have, would have shared my thoughts at the time. But, uh, I just saw this and it was just like, oh, head exploding. Such a huge, huge impact to, to us personally and I think to the whole neighborhood, so I, I can't.
Absolutely.
I understand.
Let me, okay, let me, let me say something. If the, if that little asterix and two was there, there, Mr. Mato can add one more unit by right. Another, he'll be allowed for three units. Uh, just, I would like to ask a question, Mr. Carey, Carey?
Crean.
Crean, Crean, how many square feet your land is?
Um, Joe, we are just under a half acre. I own three lots.
Half acre, so, so you have twenty thousand square feet?
No, we have, uh, we were, uh, seven, nine, yeah, like seven, seven, fourteen and nine, but maybe, maybe twenty thousand, yeah. Cause we just purchased.
Just imagine, if we're gonna follow the bylaw, Mr. Carey there can come and put six units. If we're gonna read the flaws by law. Mrs. Cheryl, Cheryl, Miss?
Shannon.
Cheryl, how many square feet you have, Cheryl? How many square feet your land?
I believe it's, I'm not sure, um, I.
I think you have a half acre, Cheryl.
Yes, I have a half acre, um.
Okay, so half acre, over twenty thousand, check up on two units. Uh, Mrs. He, uh, Lizard, Liz, Lizaral, Lizal?
Uh, that's my wife, Haga. Uh, we have.
Okay, Haga, did you speak? Did you wanna speak?
Um, no, I'm okay with, uh, what Dan was saying, so thank you.
Okay, uh.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject?
Yeah.
Um, the property that's on the, uh, southeast side of Glen Charlie Road is in strip commercial. The properties across the street are in.
Residential.
Uh, residential. Uh, strip commercial allows residential use, so, uh.
Okay, you're absolutely.
It's, it's different zoning requirements. Uh, we also have to have a minimum of two hundred and fifty feet of frontage to allow this, uh, zoning count or unit count, so.
Which you have, I understand.
You're comparing smaller house lots that, yeah, maybe twenty thousand square feet, but they don't have the two hundred and fifty feet of frontage you would need uh, to, uh, follow under other residential use.
I have, I did.
Sir, you cannot, Mr. Care, you cannot interfere without me, let me, let you speak. Uh, if, I, I, I understand what Mr. Potello said. He's right, whoever's in, in, uh, residential does not qualify like the gentleman, like Mato. But however, I still believe the intention of the bylaw is, add each additional unit twenty thousand feet. Uh, I wanna see if, if the board disagree with me, we'll continue the way it is before we go any further. And if the, and, so there's no sense, uh, fight and, or beating the dead horse if the board agrees with me. If they disagree, we'll continue the way it is. And if anybody agree with the decision, they're allowed to appeal it under section seventeen with the chapter forty-eight national laws. So I wanna start by with, uh, Richard. Richard, do you agree with my theory?
Um, come back to me. I wanna see what the rest of the, how the rest of the board feels.
Okay, Veronica, do you agree with my theory?
Um, I, I, I do think that you, that you're probably correct about the asterisk not being there. It would seem odd. It seems like an odd allowance. Um, I would like some time to do a little bit more research.
Okay, very well, Troy.
I agree with you.
Uh, Jimmy?
I interpret it the way you do, Naz.
Okay, Richard?
Free with you, Commissioner?
Okay, so, so, uh, the way we see it right now, uh, for the applicant and Mr. Potello. Uh, at this moment, I could ask the board to close the public hearing or get a motion and pull a vote to see if it's special permit or variance. Or, or, but we can't do this. We have to overturn the building. That's the only legal way to do it, overturn the building inspection inspector decision. Uh, but, uh, it's gonna need a vote. Unless you're willing to withdraw without prejudice and come back as a variance.
Uh, thank you. Um, we, we met with town planner and building commissioner before we started laying anything out. This has already been discussed with both town boards. Building commissioner states that the bylaw as written, twenty thousand square feet. This is not the first project that's been done and constructed under this current bylaw. So, uh, that, we're not here looking for, uh, a decision on one of this. Is twenty thousand square feet per unit or not. That decision has already been made by the building commissioner, so.
Okay, if it's, if it's made, what do you need us for? Why you here for?
Because we need a special permit for the use.
I, well.
Residential, multi-family residential use is a special permit.
Have you heard the board? I disagree totally with it. And that's gonna open a can of worms everywhere in the commercial, strip commercial. I had somebody approach me for some on across from my Nicky Muffler for the same issue, and I said, no. The forty B project, if everybody remembers, Settlers of Pen. They approached us as that first. And they didn't have to do forty B and they could have fit all these units without forty B. And by went forty B because they know it's not, it's, it's, it's a typographical error. Uh, I am not willing to go down that way. If the planner agree with you and the commissioner, if they could hand you a permit. Have them hand you a permit, but I'm not willing to agree with it. It's a variance. If you wanna come back for a variance or I pull a vote, so I don't know what your wishes, you wanna continue, we could continue, consult with your, uh, with your applicant, with your client, and we could follow up on it.
Um, Naz?
Yes.
It, there may be some merit in continuing, but I think if we're gonna continue, no matter what. Project in this scope certainly needs a review. I think we need Charlie Rowley to look over the engineering. I don't know if it's appropriate to get that, to get that started. If we make a decision one way and need it, at least we haven't wasted their time. If we make a decision the other way, um, it may, it may either confirm or deny some of our thoughts, but I, I, um, I hate to waste the applicant's money on a fifty-three G account if, if our decision is gonna, uh, is gonna be there's a scrivener's error in the, um, bylaws and, and we're not gonna grant.
I, like I said, the, the bylaw as it stands and the commissioner's letter according to the bylaw, it is right. However, we, we all know, I know what the intention is and I disagree with it. And I'm not willing to go forward for it.
Well, can, can I?
If I have one more person goes for me, it's out. Yes, Veronica.
Um, I mean, this is a voting situation and special permit has to be not detrimental to the neighborhood. And this, this in what we consider to be the interpretation is, is detrimental, so we don't necessarily, um, need it to be re brought before the board again. We could, I mean, it would be a denial, I guess, or it would be, it has to be, you know, X, Y, Z, I guess, because it's not like we can't vote um, against it.
A, a special permit, you have eighty-one thousand. Right, but eighty-one thousand square feet, with all due respect, what's fair is fair. It's not detrimental to put six units. If you wanna go with the special permit. All what I'm saying, you guys could continue with a special permit. I don't have a problem with that. I am not voting against. I'm not gonna go for it. You guys wanna continue? Be my guest, let's continue. I just don't want you to waste the general time and engineer's time. If you guys interested to continue a special permit, go ahead. I'm not, I'm, I'm voting against it. But I would like you not to be a, a bias be, uh, when, as a special permit. With all due respect, eighty thousand square feet is plenty for six units, if you wanna treat it as special permit. I mean, what's fair is fair. I don't think it's special permit, but if you want to do the special permit, you can say it's detrimental. Eighty thousand square feet is plenty. So what's your wishes? Do you wanna continue as a special permit? Who wants to continue a special permit? Please, uh, say aye, Richard?
I.
Hey.
No? Okay, and I'm no, that's that. Veronica?
I like, I want, I want more time to.
More time, Jimmy?
Mr. Chairman, can I interject?
One second, sir. Jimmy?
We got two Nays and we got, um, more time, at, at the very minimum. We should probably continue and give everybody a chance to really give, you know, it's hard to make a decision in fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I totally understand. It's not gonna happen tonight either way. It's not gonna happen.
So, so, I, I think instead of belaboring this and, and tending ourselves down to a specific decision, let's just, let's just agree that we, we, we don't know and continue it and give everybody a chance to look into it and come back in two weeks and, and have a solid feel. I have a pretty solid feel of where I think I stand, but maybe over the next week or two, I could look at things and talk to the commissioner and, and maybe my mind would be moved in a different direction.
Okay, very well. Brad, did you wanna say, Brad?
Oh, good, said Brad, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, uh, I, I, I respectfully request we, uh, uh, get a continuance to get the building commissioner to either attend the next hearing or clarify his letter. Again, we vetted this out between town planner and building commissioner before we moved forward. And that's the reason why we move forward because this is, uh, meets, meets the unit, meets the, uh, the zoning bylaw. So that's, that's why I'd like to, uh, at least request a, a two week continuance so that, uh, the building commissioner can and can clarify himself and the reasons why he stated that this is a special permit.
We, we will. I have no problem with this. And I, like I said, I totally agree with the way he, he wrote it. It's to reflect the zoning bylaw. I'm not saying he did it wrong. He did it absolutely right. But the zoning bylaw intention is typographical error. It's an, it's, it's wrong. The intention is not what it says. I'm not saying he's wrong. He's absolutely right. So is the town planner. Uh, that being said, yes, Mr. Care, Gary?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm not sure if you guys on the, on the board act, do this, but the, you know, the, uh, the blueprints, the drawings, they're fantastic. They got details like you can't even imagine. But maybe someone should come out and actually walk the property. And see what this is gonna do, because what's on paper is one thing. What you see is, is, is a different thing. I think it would be.
Sir, again, I'm a fair person. I'm, I was all due respect.
Mm-hmm.
An engineer who puts a stamp on the plan is absolutely by the book and his studies don't fail. I'm, I'm being fair, just like I'm speaking against the applicant, I'm speaking against you. And when it's hashed out with the town engineer, everything will be by the book. That Mr. Potello would not put his signature on it if the drainage does not work or degrade and all that. That being said, let's, let's get a motion to continue?
Oh, moved. Just, just, just for the record, I did go by and walk that lot.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we get a motion to close? I mean, sorry, to continue?
Moved.
Motion to continue until the, one second.
The twenty-eighth or?
Twenty-third.
Sorry, twenty-third, sorry, twenty-third.
March twenty-third, I have a second on that.
A second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye, Veronica?
Aye.
Right, Jimmy?
Aye.
Troy? Yes?
Yes.
Yes, Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So we'll see on the twenty-third. Everybody does his homeworks, do his studies, do his thinking, take a ride there, take a walk, whatever, don't walk on the property without permission.
Are the neighbors gonna be, uh, notified again or do we just?
Next time, you will not be notified. It's on your own to be here. You would not get another green card.
Okay.
And certify to everybody's listening and tell your neighbor, you won't get another one, so you'll have to be on your own.
So it's March twenty-third?
March twenty-third, same time.
Sixth.
Thank you.
Can I interrupt? I have a quick question. Same, also zoom to connect to everything right there.
She wants to know if it's the same zoom on the twenty-third?
Yeah, uh, why don't you contact the planning board, contact Mr. Aaron right here at Sasken Buckland?
Okay.
You look young Ken tonight. So that's Aaron and contact the office, then, then shoot you in, an email with the, with the zoom link and if your neighbor, she couldn't get in, they could shoot her an email, okay?
I'll send them, yeah, I'll send them to you guys again.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, see you, see you on the twenty-third. Okay.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, thank, thank.
Mr. Chairman and Board members, thank you for your time tonight. I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you very much, Brian, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go forward, any other business or discussion? Uh, we wanna this, we wanted to discuss. I know you guys were talking about the solar, oh, Settlers Glen, Settlers Glen, you guys got an email? When you guys, are you guys gonna be able to testify online for Settlers Glen? I can testify against that because I voted for it. So the the four of you, well, here is three Veronica, Richard and Jimmy. One one of you at least or two, I mean, the more the better. If you wanna win this case, you have to go online and contact, I think it's March, March fourth or sixth. Oh, no, April fourth or sixth. So you gotta contact Ken and discuss with him if you wanna testify. And you should talk to him and get more knowledgeable about the issue, maybe with town planner. So you guys have some ammunition. Uh, I believe at that time, Mrs. Exeterum, she had some rally that room pretty good. Against it, maybe you guys could reach out for her, she give you some fuel.
What's this, what's this, Settlers Glen? This is the decision to um.
To become rental. We remember the board voted for one zero to be not to be a rental stay for sale. And apparently it was appealed as we expected. It will definitely be appealed and it's appealed with the housing authority, with the housing commission in Boston. So and now we have, once the appeal come in, the housing chairman will have to ask questions. What do you base it on? Why did you deny it? All kinds of question, what what basically what's what's your case?
Was it voted for one zero or was it three and two and you was it two?
Four one zero, four one zero, me against. I mean, me for me, I get you guys made a motion to deny. Four people said yes, including Jake, I said no.
Okay. So what they're asking now is for when that is gonna be a mediation, this is gonna be a lawyer for the applicant?
Pretty much, it's a mediation slash hearing.
Okay.
So slash, it's before the housing committee chairman. So the chairman of the state of Massachusetts Housing will hold the children will hold the hearing and he would need somebody to testify. Now, keep in mind, if none of you shows up, that's mean you're okay with that and it's gonna be dead in a while.
And so it's gonna be the first, it's gonna be the first week in April, either the fourth through the eighth. And I I already responded and told him that I'd be available.
Okay, so which will be, it'd be good to have another person.
I I'll definitely be there.
Okay, very well. And I'll let Jake know and Jimmy. And so you guys, maybe you should read, have prepare something because with the housing chairman could be could be tricky questions. So just try to be prepared. Uh, Troy, you could also, Troy wasn't there, so you could also attend, but you're not gonna be able to testify.
Okay.
Okay, we go back, uh.
On that, wait a minute, Nas.
What's up, buddy?
Yeah, on that uh on that hearing, um, I asked a few questions. I thought I did reply, oh, Ken replied. The responses included the word vote. So that he said that they're gonna make suggestions and then we're gonna vote on it. So how how is, does anybody know how such a vote is taken? And who and who votes?
We have to talk to Ken.
Yeah, that's right. But are you talking about Settlers Glen or the solar?
I'm talking about Settlers Glen. When we were talking about Settlers Glen, I asked a few questions and he said that it'll be mediation. And then the mediator will make suggestions and then we'll vote on his suggestion. I don't know who. I don't know who the voter.
Probably that's how it goes. So they're gonna do suggestion, you guys come back with it to the board and we'll vote on it.
You feel as though we'd come back to the board and vote on it?
Most likely, they most of these times, at least once or sometime, at least once, they remander back to the zoning board to rethink. Most of these cases on most appeals, any judge or a clerk or a chairman will not make a decision right away. He will say, okay, let's remember back to the zoning board, let them rethink it. And then we'll act. Most cases, even a regular permit, not only forty B, even a variance special, but most of these times it get remanded. So uh that so, but it'll be good for you to have some input at the hearing and it gets remanded to us.
Okay.
You know, okay, anything else you guys like to discuss?
Um, just a clarification for the um RJ motto, so do are we gonna, you want Charlie to look at it? Are we gonna wait two weeks?
No, we'll wait two weeks because if they wish to open a fifty three G account, this is up to them.
Right, okay.
If they wish to do so, that's perfectly fine. They could start the process, they wanna pay the money, that's fine. But it's totally up to to the applicant.
All right, sounds good.
Well, anything else, guys?
Are you making out with the solar bylaws?
Solar bylaws are, the solar bylaw is complete and ready to be turned in to the planning board and to the selectmen and to the world for a vote. There's a complete new solar bylaw written. Definitions, article for submission, et cetera. Um, I can share it with all you guys. I um it's it's eight pages long.
And I'm and just for the record, I'm totally against it because it's just, it's it's a biased bylaw.
Well, they do make, there are a certain amount of the there certainly is a lot of solar allowed by right. The bylaw in general allows under two hundred and fifty by right anywhere, pretty much. The but that's existing. And anything on a rooftop, anything on an open area already, anything that's, if you're not cutting trees, it's pretty much allowed. It's what the bylaw is trying to do, even though it took them eight pages to do it, is it's trying to make it real hard to to clear cut large areas of land. So they've kind of tailored a bylaw that says when you get to a certain size, if you're cutting a large amount of trees, you you it's very limited to where you do can do it. And they've and they've done it in such a way that there there aren't a lot of places left in Wayham that you could have a um a a big solar array anymore. That's, I mean, you can, you can read it. I think that they were, yeah, I agree with what Nazzy says. It's, there's a lot of people in Wayham that just think solar is the devil. So and and this bylaw isn't necessarily saying that the solar is the devil. This bylaw, they have the belief that if you cut a tree down to put up solar, you are the devil. So um.
But with all due respect, every it's it's not a, it's not a, it's not a secret. Everybody knows I'm not a tree lover. Everybody knows. Denying this, I'm not a tree hugger. However, what's fair is fair. Uh, the bylaw.
But I I think I think there's, I think there's two sides to every story. I know that you're agreeing that you you're not a tree hugger. But at the same time, Wayham's beautiful and I think we have our share of solar powered fields. And then when now that and when all that goes, what are they gonna turn them into?
Right, listen, I'm not a tree hugger, but if you notice in any project I do, I go above and beyond in landscaping and trees. But this this is how it is. The way, if you want a solar panel, if you want alternative energy, you can't eat the pie and have it. If you're gonna have alternative energy, no fossil fuel, the only way you're gonna do it to cut trees and make solar. You're not gonna achieve otherwise.
Not gonna achieve your total goal anyway, even if you cut every tree down and put solar up. You still need fossil fuels, I don't understand why.
Right, but the fossil fuel, you're cut it dramatically.
Well, and I think Wayham's not responsible for the nation's, the entire nation's plan for solar energy. So again, you have to take into consideration how much is present in inappropriate areas.
Town has solar, everybody has solar, but this is besides the point. But the bylaw, I I hope it passes for them, you know, and believe me, I'm not doing the solar. I don't know anybody doing solar, I don't care. I'm a person who likes fossil fuel. I hope my car would never be electric. I like that, I'm an inj. So she likes electric, but I don't like electric cars. But I do, was not for the record, for every house I built, I put top notch, high efficiency units, I plant a lot of trees, I love trees and I I love grass and I love shrubs. I'm not, if it comes to build the house for a human to live in it or solar to to eliminate fossil fuel according to the studies, maybe it's all a lie anyway. So I'm 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 against it. All we know, they say it's good. I know the the, I know it saves, but how much it saves? But it's what we hear, it says it's very good. So whether it's a scam or not, I don't know. But.
You confuse me, Mr. Chairman. You say you don't like any trees, but at the same time, you say you plant top notch ones, you.
Yeah, go look at all my project, I plant a lot.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, you're getting two side, you've got two sides going, so I'm happy with that.
I don't, I'm not a tree hugger when it comes to build the house or a project. And it the trees does not, I I think you gotta cut them to build the project. In the same time, when you can cut and build a project, you can put nice shrubberies, nice trees, nice grass. So but I disagree with like clear cutting and building houses and don't plant anything. But that's that's what I'm trying to say. But hopefully the bylaw passes, eh?
That was refreshing to be able to have a debate without somebody just saying that it was right or wrong. So thank you for all your time for debating this out.
Although he's wrong.
What do you mean I'm wrong? Go ahead, show me. How am I wrong?
Let me explain, let me explain to you, Nazzy. Let me explain this so you understand it, Nazzy. If a tree falls in the woods and there's no woman there to hear it, is the tree still wrong?
I can answer this.
Don't bring a man and woman in there. I don't wanna be now.
I'll tell you the answer.
Just.
If she says it's wrong.
If she see, see. Veronica's here for. So I have the bylaw, if you want me to, I'll email it to all of you, you can read it.
You can send it to me, I don't know if everybody else wants.
Troy, you wanna?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Yeah.
Veronica?
It's been belabored to me.
Pardon me?
So I know it. But no, but please, no, you can send it to me, you can send it to me. Um, I'd like to have it. I I I do know what it says, but not word for word, so I would like to have it.
Yes, and and you know, I I I'm sort of with Nazzy. Um, see, my position on solar is this. Um, I'll 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 narrow it right down as in as few words as possible. I watched Elon Musk give a speech one time. The short version is the state of Rhode Island is the land area necessary to generate all the solar energy needed for all energy for all the forty eight continental United States. That's heating, air conditioning, washing machines, dryers, cooking and transportation. All energy for the entire forty eight, lower forty eight could be generated from a solar array the size of Rhode Island. He then took Rhode Island and put it on the state of Texas in a in a presentation, you know, to make his point. And then he said, and if you needed to store energy generated by solar in batteries so that they could go all night, obviously you need to do that. The amount of land area needed to house those batteries. And he zoomed in and that land area was one pixel on the screen, one pixel. So.
I have a thing that's gonna go in your spokes and stop that wheel from turning. You said houses, heating, the majority users of the the energy is industrial and factories and commercial. So if that's included in his.
I I said all energy. I don't know, did.
Oh, you didn't, no, you didn't say that, but I.
I said all and all energy included.
He did, he did say all energy.
Oh, and the.
And washing machines and I listened specifically to what I said.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm wrong, the tree fell and I didn't say industrial.
No, no, so so if he said that, I I'm very skeptical about that because it should, but with that being said, it doesn't mean all of Wayham has to be a solar panel.
Jimmy, Jimmy, you shouldn't make that story about the tree in the woods.
We don't wanna put it in Wayham, we wanna put it in Rhode Island. So I'm I'm currently, I'm currently personally so vested in that comment that I'm taking a reverse approach to it. And what I'm trying to figure out and 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 I'm using a coal fired power plant because that's the dirtiest and that creates the most carbon. So what I'm trying to calculate, and I need scientists to help me, how much CO two does a coal fired power plant that produces three hundred and sixty five gigawatts or megawatts? I forget what it is, I got it written down of power? And and how many acres of trees does it take to scrub that carbon? Because if the solar array fits inside the tree farm that cleans the coal powered plant, if you can follow what I'm saying, then solar is cleaner. It's cleaner to cut trees down than it is to burn coal, oil or gas. And by by the way, burning wood is dirtier than burning coal.
Well, I totally agree. I mean, for example, let's say a healthy tree creates, I think, four tons of carbon. Or I'm.
Consumes.
Consumes four thousand, yeah, consume, so yes, consumes four thousand tons of carbon. But the area that you put a solar arrays, the amount of energy that produce, they are like ten times more to burn fuel or coal with the tree covers. So you 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 save like ten times. That's what, again, I'm not a scientist and that could be all lies, who knows?
No, I'm I'm trying to get the facts and I'm trying to, you know, quote my sources. Hopefully I'll be able to do it. I just, it's a personal curiosity. You know, wood biomass produces fifteen tons for the same amount of energy, ten megawatts to produce ten megawatts. Wood biomass produces ten tons of carbon, coal, I'm sorry, fifteen, coal, ten tons, oil, eight tons, natural gas, four point six, solar, one ton, wind, one tenth of a ton, nuclear, six, one thousandths of a ton, hydro, four thousandths of a ton. So that's how much, that's which one's clean and which one's dirty? So it's obvious where the problems lay. But you know, my my point is that um, yeah, you you might have to cut a few trees, but every time you, every time you put up a solar array, you're eliminating a carbon producing fossil fuel burning power plant. Enough solar, the right note that you're not producing any carbon. The only thing that's producing carbon is us breathing.
What I'd like to see with 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 all these figures that you're throwing out there and tons of this and tons of that, I'd like to see all these big people build a little town and fuel it and fire it all by solar. And then you write down all the little problems you got with it and then you multiply that times all the towns in the United States and you tell me if it's worth it.
I think it, well, I know I I've already figured it out what it would cost for me to generate my own power with solar for my own home, my own cars and and be one hundred percent off the grid. I know what it would cost, I know what it would take for equipment. I wish I had the dough to do it, it's eighty grand. Eighty grand I can convert my my property, every bit of energy I use to drive to cut, to replace my truck and my car.
Wow.
How long would it take you to recoup? How long would it take you to recoup the eighty thousand that you invested?
Four four point six years. Four point six years. I yeah, that's that's gone four hundred miles a month in a F two fifty, four hundred miles a month in an F two fifty, burning diesel. That's eight grand a year right there. Then my Jeep takes another four grand.
You got you gotta double it now with the gas price, with fuel prices.
I I'm doing it, I'm doing, well, then then two years.
Well, I.
I don't buy it, you're gonna need, you're gonna need grants and everything else and whatnot. You you can't tell me that that's gonna be that way, but hey.
Eighty grand, eighty grand, Richie, I'll I'll show you, I need.
Yeah, but not not in two years.
No, four point six years, I said. Four point six years, I gotta buy, I gotta buy an electric. No, four point six years, I said, four point six years, I gotta buy, I gotta buy an electric car and electric truck. I gotta replace my car and my truck.
That includes, that includes the eighty grand?
No, 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 no.
Oh, so we're at what, a hundred and twenty grand?
Eighty grand generates the power and stores it, how I consume it, that's another cost.
Anyway, if I may, I went to one of the hearings and I'm, just so you know. I'm, I was against all the solar panels everywhere because it's eating up our residential and it's eating up our industrial land. I wanted them to put it on the cranberry bogs, but unfortunately. Conservation don't want them on the cranberry bogs, so now, now what? Should, you could, you could see the records, I was against it everywhere except some areas on the R one thirty. But I said we shouldn't be allowing them no more because it's eating up, not because I like the trees, for the record. Because it's eating up our residential and our industrial and our commercial land. And yeah, it's making money now, but twenty years from now, the new generation cannot open a store or build a house if we're gonna eat up all the land with solar.
How do you feel about solar on top of parking lots and solar on top of industrial buildings?
You never be able to regroup the mon, the, recover the money you spent if you build the canopy in a car park lot. A park, a naked park lot will cost you at least a million dollar steel to build the carport to put the, the solar, and how much you gonna save?
I don't know, but I think in, in, in Jim's addition and multiplication, I'd probably, that million would probably be what, ten years?
Do it tomorrow, if it's.
I can, I can put it to you, I can put it to you in paper, Rich, I can show you.
No, I, I know the, I, I know the figures, I'm just, I, I, I just don't buy it, no matter how many figures you give me, I just. Till the day I die, I'm not gonna buy the fact that you can supplement everything by a solar panel.
Queen Elizabeth thought, thought the same thing about falling off the edge of the earth, Christopher Columbus proved her, her wrong.
Yes, Christopher, we have a Gustav Acquabachi. Anyway, while I'm sure we all have our own philosophy and, and views and everything. And who knows what the truth is, but anyway.
Putin, Putin knows.
Close.
Putin knows the truth. Vlad, ask Vlad, he'll tell you, Vladimir, what should we do?
Don't even say his name, he's a devil.
I make a motion to close.
Okay, so have a second? Second, by the way, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
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 So we're closed, thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Take care.